Welcome to the call to meeting order. Mr. Foust, can you confirm we have a forum, sir?
Yes, sir, we do.
Fantastic. Take it, sir. Counsel, you have an agenda before you that was pre-distributed. Deal the floor for a motion.
Make a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion seconded. Discussion, counsel. Big nine all in favor? Post said. Thank you, counsel. Next item, T-SWAST, IGA agreement, myself and Mr. Douglas. Mr. Douglas, if you will, sir, give us a rundown.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, counsel, for entertaining us to be sitting out here in front of you. Our original plan, as we kind of talked about in July, was for this to be a work session, a typical work session, a kind of a robust committee updates of different projects and stuff. So we wanted to all sit at the same table and kind of present the information that we have later on the agenda. But we did have a little bit of a pivot moment last week in terms of consulting with the county. As you may recall, there had been a desire to partner with the county and the cities in terms of floating the idea of referendum for a transportation special purpose local option sales tax. And so we had found out that we had sufficient time to put it on a referendum. And the benefit of that is because I think that there is a desire from the community and all parties involved, city and cities and county, to have some element of funding to help with transportation projects, specifically roads, culverts, bridge, sidewalks, multi-use trails, all those things that for the past several years, each jurisdiction has begun making improvements, but there's nothing really been specifically allocated beyond that of some capital funds from the jurisdictions governing bodies and maybe some SWAAS. So what the T-SWAST allows us to do is to specifically set aside the one penny sales tax if it's approved by voter referendum, to then set aside one penny. And it's done through an intergovernmental agreement. And so before you all this evening is an agreement drafted which mirrors a lot of the other jurisdictions around us. This particular legislation passed a decade or so ago in which there are regional T-SWASTs and then there are single county T-SWASTs. We in Pickens County, in cities, are proposing an intergovernmental agreement for the use and distribution of proceeds from a transportation special purpose local option sales tax. And in it, you'll find that there's a lot of the legalese, which is essentially the county is the governing body that can call for a referendum. And it can be a six-year referendum or six-year SWAAS. And the proceeds for Jasper, for instance, and I think that's probably what you all are interested in, is what would the benefit to the city of Jasper be? And the projected estimates, if it began collection in April of 2025 for a six-year T-SWAST, would be roughly $9,180,000. So that's a little over 1.5 million per year that would be dedicated towards transportation projects in the city. So other jurisdictions get a proportion, a percentage. But ultimately, the overall goal is to make sure that the projects that we are proposing to fund is not a complete catch-all. What we want to do is we want to encumber some specific projects. And, Mr. Mayor, I don't know if you want to highlight a few of them or if you just kind of give a more broader base view of the project list.
No, sir, I'm good. I don't believe details needed verbally. Page 17, counsel of the IGA that's been presented, goes through the actual appendix that is attached for our municipality. It covers the 9.1. It lists out some of the roads, the projects, but it says not to be limited to. And so this could cover anything inside of our jurisdiction. I've had the honor and privilege to work with Nelson and Hoppin Rock and the county. We have some wonderful partners. The executive committee, which is comprised of Dr. Proctor, Mr. Looney, they also met with our partners. And this agreement I am extremely happy to present to counsel tonight for your consideration. Mr. City Mayor, do you have anything else to add?
Nothing further. Does it need questions from the body?
Mr. Douglas, I have one question. During our initial meeting, there had been some indication that it was a five-years period that this would be involved with or whatever the term would be. But now we found that it can be six. Can you kind of explain what the requirements for that are and how we came to the realization, I guess, that six-years were an option?
And Mr. Siphon may be able to add in, but I would say from a layman's perspective, bureaucrat, is with any special purpose local option sales tax, the county is the governing body that can float a referendum. However, in partnership, and that's a five-year, so just if they decide to go forward, with the six-year is an intergovernmental agreement to where all parties are essentially agreeing that this is for the betterment of the community. You then get the state law allowance for that extra year of collection since there's consensus among your major county seat and other jurisdictions. Is that accurate, Mr. Siphon?
That's pretty accurate.
Good job.
Good job.
Well, it was a pleasant surprise for a couple reasons. Obviously, the additional year that we were negotiating about and also the fact that we were able to work with our other two cities as well as our county to come to an agreement in relatively short order based on the fact that there was a substantial amount of money that was going to be on the table. And any kind of delay would have just pushed those monies further out. So good job that we're all involved, including staff and elected for three cities and our county.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, without further discussion, yield the floor for a motion.
Make a motion that the council approve our governmental agreement for use and distribution of proceeds with T-SWAST and authorize the mayor to execute any and all necessary documents. I'm going to second my motion, Mayor.
Motion seconded. Discussion, counsel. And before I do call for a vote, I will say this is an extraordinary example of our organization coming together with our partners, Nelson, Hoppin Rock and the county. This is one more go-round of wonderful experience. All in favor?
Aye.
The post said. Thank you, counsel. Next item, the city manager's office update. Mr. Douglas, I'm trying to get a few, sir.
Yes, sir. So clearly, everyone at this table is not in the city manager's office. But for the most part, they are on a pretty regular, on good terms. So the significance of this is, like I said earlier, to provide you all with updates on various items. You may wonder what the PTV ordinance is and if I told you that that was something that we had discussed about years ago. You may scratch your head and think, what is it? It's essentially golf cart. It's personal transportation vehicles. It's just another way of saying it because you don't just isolate something just to a golf cart. It's a personal transportation vehicle. You may be aware, and also under the heading of, this is not something that we're looking for action tonight or August the 5th. What we wanted to do is approach the subject because this occurred in kind of my previous tenure of discussion. I just want to revisit that along with perhaps another text amendment to ordinances. So the update portion of tonight would not have any sort of call for motion from staff. It's merely an update. We would want some direction or feedback, but you don't have to. This evening, we do have the August 5th. But ultimately, Chapter 78 of our code of ordinances is where the landing spot is to what you would consider allowance of golf carts. The PTV ordinance is something that caught on years ago in terms of a very succinct section, a very, you know, brief underlying of mirroring state law. In a nutshell, you have a city street, not a state highway or county road, but a city-controlled street that is rated at 25 miles an hour. And essentially, you can have a personal transportation vehicle registered to utilize that roadway because typically they have to be geared to about 20 miles an hour as in allowable speed, electric or motorized through gasoline. Typically, what you would do is you would have the police department be the entity that registers. You would go to them. They would look at it to make sure it's road safe and is compliant with all the standards as needed through the ordinance. And what you already have in Chapter 78 is already kind of a building block. So I wouldn't necessarily think that if this is something the ordinance to amend, to make it a little easier. Because I think right now there has been some confusion because it's under traffic and vehicles and it's across multiple pages, different things. And some of the roadways that are listed in here in regards to even speed hasn't been updated either 1979 or 1997. So I do think there's opportunities for us to look at with our partners, Public Safety, to say, hey, look, council's wanting us to look into these sections of the ordinance. And I think it can be pretty much amended to allow for certain roads to be identified in a different speed limit. And then in terms of looking at other roads that aren't necessarily treacherous for these PTVs, you can merely then have the ordinance updated in that manner. So I didn't want to get into a whole lot because, like I said, many of you may be aware that this was in here. Many of you may think, well, it's kind of hard to decipher because it is. And that's why I kind of put PTV because you could take the PTV ordinance from other communities and insert it in. But I do think if y'all are willing and able, we can certainly take a look at this, give y'all more of a redlined version at maybe the August 22nd work session and move forward. So I didn't know if y'all are excited about that or leaving it alone or come back. But beyond that, that's really kind of where we are at the staff level because I do think that if we just go with it, it's going to continue to just be confusing. And we do need to do some amendments to mirror state law regardless. But I didn't want to go down that road if it's something we're not desiring ourselves.
Can we make it work green, but no orange is allowed? Is that possibly acceptable? Sounds great to me.
Would it, could it require lights on the vehicles or would it operate?
Yes, sir. That and the taillights and some other measures.
Sure does.
Yes, sir.
I should look at it.
Would it include utility vehicles or those razors and all that as well?
It, so there are. So in the PTV, what I will do is reference the PTV ordinance, which is ordinances throughout other communities that basically took more of the MUTCD, federal highway and then state guidelines. And so there are certain exempt, not say exemptions, not allowance of like ATVs, but typically with four wheels, you can allow. They are typically rated for more of your lesser fast, that's the word.
Slower.
Slower. So, but it is up to the jurisdictions because right now it would allow in your Chapter 78, certain cases.
And several years ago, we did talk about having some roads that those were allowed on. So yeah, I would like to see this go back to.
There's a point where you purchase some property to have pass.
Yes.
And counsel, sir, where some citizens have been reaching out to staff and myself about this, showing interest in what it would look like for them as citizens. Thank you, sir.
And in regards to the text amendment, Chief Sher and I are going to kind of bounce some things back and forth. There's something that I would like to flip by y'all that in regards to fire suppression. I think that at least my professional opinion is we have some opportunities to mirror some best practices with regards to having exemptions of our sprinkler to hangars. We've kind of been under advisement that there are some FAA regulations that do allow for certain exemptions at certain square footage. It would only be applicable to those FAA guidelines with respect to hangars. Before I kind of even dug into it, I confirmed with chief his take. And I think he's got some advice that instead of us modifying what's on our books, we could potentially look at just a separate ordinance as it relates to that specific instance so it doesn't get clouded in the existing Chapter 38.
So ordinance 2023-13 in Chapter 30.
Okay, 30. I have the three right. So, and we'll get you some language, but I essentially just wanted an asterisk. If you recall, probably four years ago, I'd approached y'all about exemptions because to me, from a best practice perspective, an airport is not necessarily, it is a different complete entity than some other places within our jurisdiction.
Thank you, sir.
Sounds good.
So moving on to D. And I did this too, so we can get up and move around to D2 just to disrupt Mary in this camera. So I will say, Mr. Mayor, while I'm handing this out, if you'd like, we've kind of revamped a little bit of the committee structure. Instead of just sitting in the council room and staff just communicating off what I'm doing now, spreadsheets, we go out into the field. Mr. Hannah and Ms. Snady have visited with us on site. As you will recall, the June 27th work session, we had received, or excuse me, the June 3rd meeting, we have received direction to look at budget amendments, which we provided to you all at the July 8th meeting. So then that way, we can encumber the necessary SWAAS monies for the second fire station. So council members, do y'all want to give a kind of brief update on maybe the conversation onsite with the two chiefs? I'll have them lead off and then y'all piggyback. What's y'all's plan?
Me?
I'll let the chief start.
Yeah, let that man go.
All right. Chief Sher?
Okay, we did meet out on site, Public Safety Committee meeting. So that's what you see with the actual site and where our plans were and how we visualized that. We developed this project into three different stages. Our first stage is going to be planning and site preparation. We anticipate that going through current time through September 24. That's going to include us working with site layout, being planned to go for utilities and developing our RFP. Then we move to stage two. That would be our construction phase. We anticipate that being from September 24 through January 25. Part of the reason for the length of that is materials we know will be at least a three-month lead time. That's for the metal and structural members at this time. And then stage three will be February 20, 25 through March 25. And all these are intended, obviously. My personal goal is to get this done faster than that. I don't like to drag the project out. But reality is, we may get some unforeseen setbacks and may run into some difficulties. So we're planning ahead for that. We've met with different contractors already to try and get some ideas and make sure our kids expect it's what it needs to be and make sure we're not putting confusing terminology in there. Believe everybody's familiar with our plan. Just in case they're not, we want to use the existing city-owned cabin as the facilities for the fire personnel to stay in, that'd be the living quarters, and then build the bay building beside it and attach it for the fully enclosed freeway. We also will end up separating utilities. Currently, the utilities are going through the cabin to the workout or parcel that off and move those utilities to make sure they're separate. The project would include everything to have this fire station fully operational. We've already looked ahead to any kind of furnishings and equipment we may need to operate as well. I already got asked this on this.
Thank you, sir.
Questions?
Counsel, that was provided in your package also. Any questions from selected over from Chief Sher's up there?
And, Mr. Mayor, just to kind of piggyback from financial, the reason I handed out the 2020 SWAAS spreadsheet again is you'll see that it's going to correspond to several of the items that we're talking about. And it is just to remind you too that I've learned the difference between eight and a half and 11, 11 by 17. So now you can hopefully follow along. I'll leave a print on that. But we'll talk about the downtown bathrooms tonight. Obviously, the fire station. We're also going to talk about Road Park, City Park. So I wanted to provide the spreadsheet as a way of showing how we've encumbered those projects for the next twenty-four months to make sure that we have sufficient funding. We'll get to Chief Dawkins, but the reason we also provided you with a capital outlay budget is because if you recall, we extracted out some of those capital outlay purchases from SWAAS into the general funding we amended the budget to free up some of the capital in here.
After we left the site for the fire department, we drove over to police department or and looked to where we were trying, we'd like to put our building. It's not in debt of the fire department, thank goodness, but it is well, very much needed. Will give us an opportunity to put our files, our paperwork, stuff that we have to hold for X amount of years. It will free up space in our police department. We're growing just like our department is. The building is a 24 by 25, I believe. It has a 10 by 9 door. It'll give us a lot of things, advantages for us. Officers can pull in if they need to to work on the car or clean up their car. We can also store stuff that we seize. It'll be a huge benefit for us. We actually got to go over and see one of the buildings so that council, anybody got to see kind of what we were wanting to lay out. We, it's pretty much simple. You, they come out, they put it up in eight hours and it's a very simple project. Not much to those buildings. It's kind of where we're at right now.
And so the good news is we were able to go ahead and fund all of these projects that you all had identified in 2019 as what we needed, along with all the other projects. So we're kind of getting down to the last 23 months before collections end for 2020 SWAAS. We've encumbered those monies. That does not mean that we won't over-collect. To Dr. Proctor's comment earlier, one of the things I failed to mention is the intergovernmental agreements that communities are able to execute, which we did under the 2020 SWAAS, does allow there to be no cap with regards to collections. What that means is although you're estimating, you know, six or seven years prior to the end of the term with an IGA, it does allow you to just continue to collect the amount of the one cent sales tax with no cap. So what does that mean is if we have projected $9 million for the T-SWAST and it exceeds $9 million in year five, we don't have to stop collecting. It continues on because of the IGA, which means that all communities have consensus to continue to do this. The benefit of that is you'll see that in May of this year, in June, even though we estimate budget for $85,000 worth of collections, we collected $99,000 and then $104,000 in June. So the benefit is that happens with a cash flow where we're in the positive when we extrapolate this out to the June of '26. But it also enables us to then reprogram some of those extra funds if we encounter some change order in certain things like the fire station. The police department was very generous in allowing the fire department to move forward with the UTV. Under, under.
I'm here for you. Thank you.
Under, under the knowledge that.
Is it ATV or is it?
UTV, yes, yes. Under the knowledge that there could be extra collections, we're back to school. So for instance, if in July, we get an extra 10,000 or 15,000, that money would be unencumbered. Right now, what you have before you has all been encumbered. But each month thereafter, we can cash flow that and discern, hey, this is something that was important, but we cut it or we moved it for the benefit of the team. So here, we can reprogram that money appropriately. And that goes for any of the remaining projects such as City Park, Road Park. We do feel as though, you'll hear from Andrew just momentarily about the downtown bathrooms, we feel as though that we budgeted adequately to cover any remaining cost of that. So just want to add that, Mayor and counsel, of the importance of the IGA as well.
Thank you. Next item.
Well, I guess I'd be.
Yes, sir.
So the downtown bathrooms, I know it looks like it's set dormant for the last week or so. The rain is not helping with the concrete work that needs to be done around the restrooms. But there are some punchwork list items that we're waiting on the manufacturer to repair. Unfortunately, it requires experts in different fields. It's not just one punch list that one contractor can come in and take care of. We do anticipate some of the repairs being done next week on some of the punch list items. We do not have a schedule on one of the remaining ones yet. So the anticipation to be open in August doesn't look like it's going to be doable. But wasn't it for a lack of effort? The facade, we have to get the concrete poured around the building before we can do the facade of the building. Due to the weight of the facade, it's got to have a solid surface to set on. That's why we have to wait on the concrete. And then if Mother Nature would hold up for a couple days, we could get the concrete done and then move forward with the rest.
Thank you, sir.
And, Mr. Mayor, counsel, I do want to just interject and add that between Kim and Andrew, they have done a phenomenal job. Modesty would be something that we're hearing tonight. But what I'll tell you is we kind of scaled back staff's involvement because, you know, we did want to make sure that the vendor followed through with the required punch list items. And albeit, you know, the enthusiasm we have for the project was to let's just go ahead and do this, this and this. And then we kind of convened as a group and said, well, it's better for the vendor to follow through because from a warranty perspective, we don't want to negate that warranty. So we're just trying to be patient as well. But we do want y'all to know that we continue to stay on top of it. But as with any vendor, when you're relying on external partners, sometimes it's just a matter of mobilizing and then weather events do not help. So we're going to continue to stay on top of it and be enthusiastic and hopefully have even more of a report update by August 5th. So we'll continue to provide such.
Thank you. City Park.
And while I hand this out, a couple weeks ago, we had given the committee kind of a ROM, a rough order of magnitude. So they've had a little more time to digest this. I don't know if they have any specific lead-ins that they want to come in on. This stems from the town hall meeting that was conducted on City Park. We had, Kim and I had spoken with Kimberly Horr about looking at how we could provide some level of cost to do certain things, understanding that some budgetary constraints would be evident of, you know, can't do it all at one time. But you'll see in the SWAAS spreadsheet, there's about $50,000 allocated. They've provided a ROM from a low and a high. Didn't know, council member, spouse, Hannah, if y'all have any specific comments about anything on here. I do owe them a site visit in person, similarly to the other committee. But unfortunately, I've just not been able to schedule. So I apologize.
Me?
I hope that the email calls, I see the calls. But anytime that we have a facility such as a park that's going to be maintained, so we might really look at whether we can check our budget and try to most far above. It's going to be a challenge. And that's just not City Park. That's going to be over at Lee Luton Park. That's going to be where we do park. So really, they have a good game. So really need to have a good game plan for the next few years. And then that way, Perot, we can make sure it's, it'll be a great part.
And, and just to elaborate, we coordinated some, some time with Josh. What I'd like to do is have the committee out there, just kind of boots on the ground looking, because we've got some ideas from staff's perspective, what we could do in-house to help mitigate some costs that I think would give a bigger bang for the buck from a visual perspective. I think after grass cutting season, we'll be able to kind of go out and kind of knock some, some things out high level. And then that way, we'll have identified what we can utilize the fifty thousand. Or if there's some overages in the next couple of months, that can go to the table as well.
I think the only thing to mention of your council is that there are new signs. Do you want to give an update, more staff, when we can expect the signs to be installed?
Sure. So I had reached out to MC Graphics to, I think everyone has seen the sign that is at the entrance just, let's see, just north of the ball fields where the playground is in fairly terrible shape. And so they were very good to work with and came up with a new design, kind of, you know, new look for our signs and for our parks. And most importantly, utilizing that E911 addressing system that has been established for the park. So that is, we get visitors that are not from around here, that don't necessarily know where to send somebody to if you're calling in for emergency services. So those signs have those addresses on them and we are working on getting those placed. Our sign ordinances do require some, what do you call that at the bottom?
Base.
Oh, a base, thank you. That's easy enough.
It has to be a fancy base. So it has to have the stone and, you know, it can't be a freestanding sign.
Yeah. So, you know, we are working on those fancier bases than what we currently have right now. And those should be installed here very soon.
Thank you, ma'am.
And then also too, at that town hall, you know, we did hear baseball fields and also the pickleball. What kind of opportunity do we have to get in some kind of agreement with organizations, private sector, whatever, who can raise money and fix up the pickleball club or, you know, become partners, fix up the ball field? What kind of opportunities do we have around that? I think, I think that is something from a council perspective, directives can be given in terms of looking at ways to offset that, partly because of sometimes the costs associated with, with the ball fields and the lights. That was excluded because we knew that fifty thousand would not do all that needed to be done. And we do think that with regards to the pickleball and their tennis courts, that the existing could be resurfaced with some lighting, along with some in-kind labor from us to, to do that. So we think that that could be done with the monies already encumbered.
I know that we were looking for money for the lighting, you know, several years ago was a product, where did we ever get to that?
Are we talking about the lighting around the tennis courts and the dog parks?
No, the ball field.
Oh, okay. I apologize.
I did not know, sir. I'm sorry.
Mr. Douglas, is it okay if I speak even though I'm on committee? So in August, those of you who were on council at that time, you're going to recall that we made a commitment to our parks and we also agreed to get professional guidance on how we would proceed with those parks. And at that time, our prior city manager recognized that the funding was not available for those, for really any of those projects. And the original engagement of Kimberly Horn was to explore opportunities for financing for, for our parks. John, do you remember that?
Yeah, we said that we did good recommendations.
So that was their, that was their, that was what the original intent of engaging Kimberly Horn was. And that's why they went through, their, their initial presentation to us in our follow-up retreat was focused on how we were going to handle the water, the runoff, and the environmental challenges that that site particularly presented to us. And that was the original intent of engaging Kimberly Horn. Now, if we want to go in some other direction, I think that's fine. I still think that, I personally believe that we need professional leadership on some of these larger projects, but Brandon, with your experience, that may or may not be necessary. But just want to make sure that we, we've recognized early on that funding was going to be a problem. And also, we're going to be talking about it here in a minute. Perot Park was never really part of the Parks and Recreation Committee. That, that is, that was established by an ad hoc committee by Mayor Weaver. Me and Jim were the members that were on that. It's been through several renditions, and I don't want to take anything from Kim's presentation, but, but I think to, to compare the monies that we have encumbered for Perot Park into those that we need for some other park is kind of going down a rabbit hole that we really need to try to avoid, in my personal opinion. So just, we knew we didn't have the money and we knew we didn't have the staffing. We knew we didn't have the plans or funding. So, so that was what we were trying to get to, you know? And I think they, they came to some conclusions about how we could have funding available. Unfortunately, I didn't attend the, the town hall, so I'm not going to speak to that, but just so that's on the record.
Thank you, sir.
And, and so in terms of answering the question, my experience is when I came here in, in 2019, the first year, it was at least my observation that we did not have recreational staff. Where I had previously been, you had parks which are more passive, green space, gathering spaces, destination, and you had actual complexes or sports fields, which is then from a recreational. So there are some differences. So we had, in terms of an agreement, just low hanging fruit, we had executed an intergovernmental agreement with the county to kind of help with the field maintenance. Unfortunately, I had been gone for about thirty months, and so today's about ten weeks I'm back. So unfortunately, I don't have, you know, thirty month history from when the IGA had been executed. It's my understanding that, that had essentially expired. And so at that point, the, the fields were just kind of first come, first served and/or just kind of been adopted, if you will, from, from some entities. And I think the position that I'm in is we still don't have a recreational staff. We do have some persons on, on staff that do maintenance in terms of some grass cutting, but in terms of the specialization of mounds and fields and things, we do think that the current arrangement that's just kind of ad hoc is, is doing well. And that's why I have not really pursued anything more formal in terms of, I haven't received any clear direction that we want to go back towards a county IGA if we want to do some other. I'm kind of open for the fact that, as you can tell, the, the way that I typically try to have a managing philosophy is I'll look at identified needs and then associate money with it. And so the strategic plan behind the June third meeting was to, to look into our operation and then capital approval budget. And then go from an incremental approach and say, okay, these, these monies have to be encumbered. So even with Lee Newton, Kim found an email, she forwarded to me, I had not opened it, but we think that some of the excess funds could then allow us to reinstitute monies in the next several months to Lee Newton for some improvements there. As you know, right now, that had to be struck, but we do feel comfortable that with an estimate we had received at some point last fall, we're going to re-engage and find out if we can have a, a new estimate on that. So then that way, as the extra monies come into, we can kind of put that back on here. So this document that you have on here clearly looks different than the actual budget document because this is the fluid, ever-changing type sheet that, you know, I hope to start distributing monthly along with Lindsay's financials. So then that you have a read on where we are. But that's just kind of from, from my perspective, wanted to kind of get the ROM out there to provoke the thinking, go out on site, take a look at what we do think is feasible. Because I do think that we do have money. We've already invested some time in staff and demo in the bridge. We've got some more opportunities, Mr. Faust, of removing some of the wooden structures if we see fit. So I think we got some, some good opportunities in future ahead.
Yeah. John, if you'll remember, we, we did have, had talked about the lights for quite some time. I think with the initiation of the IGA, that was put on, I wouldn't say whole, but we at least kind of felt like that, that that was in a holding pattern. And that's my recollection. And you recall, when we, when we recognized that there were things in the IGA that really addressed some of these things, Sony brought that to us and asked our opinion on whether we should try to engage the county on performing some of those obligations. And from, from that meeting shortly thereafter, the IGA pretty rapidly was dissolved and that never really happened. Do you remember that part of the-
I do, but I also know that we still have a need to maintain it when it's so far off.
Well, that's a sequence of events that kind of presented.
At one time, we did have some funds set aside. The only thing I don't want to see is we just put this Mike Park in, and I don't want to see it end up like this one here. And that's what the path for heavy down, if we don't do something and start allowing. We're going to end up with another park just like we've got. So for the Parks Committee, I would like to see y'all have some kind of plan. Like he said, Perot's always been different. It's always been a whole different committee, hasn't been under, you know, the Parks Committee. So I would personally like to see the Parks Committee have some kind of plan for the parks because I don't want to see, that was so inviting to see that many people come out. Kim did a great job and every, the staff did, to, to see that. I don't want to see it end up like this. You know, we talked about making the road back over here. I don't know whether it stands or, I think the fire department talked about that, safety talked about that being over there. I'd like to see that be discussed again, especially now that we might be able to get some funded on that.
And I think we committed to that last August when, I really think we committed to it.
I'm just having the discussion that, you know, because we're saying we don't have any money, so I'm just reiterating what-
We didn't, we didn't have any money then.
Well, I know. I'm just saying the same thing.
We weren't told, we weren't told, well, I'm agreeing with you, but, but even at, at the budget time last year, we raised the question about our commitment to parks with no budgeted funds. I was on the committee at that time. And so-
No, and, and I do agree because I understand we did have some money because when I was on it, we had some allotted and some money was moved and there was money that y'all didn't have when I came off of it. I do understand.
I never, I don't know what happened to those.
No, and it doesn't matter at this point.
You and I had talked about that when we were, when we were trying to explore the, we had, we'd made the commitment and we're moving forward towards Swiggin Town. And, and, and again, this is prior leadership.
Correct.
And we were talking about Lee Newton. The ball parks really hadn't really come into it because we, we had made the commitment. We got the playground equipment, we did the dog parks. So, but there was no, there was no plan. And when we, in the committee, when I was on this committee, we were trying to address the, the bridge. And I think John and I were in agreement that the presentations that were being presented to us were really not acceptable for a long, sustainable, to put monies in there. And that's when we first talked about engineering engagement on, on the park. And then we made that commitment in August to, to make that one of our strategic initiatives. And it's hard to move forward with a strategic initiative if you, if you follow the sequence of strategic planning, evaluating your resources is one of the key components that you do at the very beginning. And I think, I think we failed it at that meeting because we had made the commitment to the parks. We had not evaluated the finances because again, the only budget we had, if I recall correctly, in parks for last year, other than Perot, was asphalt and trails at Lee Newton. And so there was a huge shortfall. And that's why I think it's former city manager Janus went, went to Kimberly Horn and, and their response was, well, we can, we can look for ways to get funding, being grants. And, and from that study initially, they were talking about how we can manage the pond because that pond is, is, is designed to be a water management tool and it probably isn't functioning like it should in modern era. And, and, and then we kind of-
Have they looked at any kind of funding for that pond? I, I know that pond has been a sore subject for a long time, going back before some people were on it.
Correct. Keep us on track. I, I don't want to cut us too short. To keep us on track, City Mayor, you had mentioned committee going out on-site to the park and on an onsite visit.
Yes, sir.
We'll go through the itemized list. The, the road construction is part of the list that they have prepared, but we've not yet identified council what all can be done in-house by staff. I think that'll give us a better idea of what we need to look at this from committee and then create a plan for that park itself out of committee to present as a recommendation to council.
And, and part of it is, this, this was intentionally, was intentionally put on specifically because I know there had been some concerns from council in regards to, to long-term O and M. And so if you remember, my biggest thing is the one-time capital cost never really concerned me because you'll get there with some strategic planning. It's the fact that in the amended budget this year, we did have to cut two positions. Now, those positions had not been filled, and so in essence, it's just off the books to help balance the budget through the amendment. In August, September, you're going to hear staff recommend putting those two positions back. Now, clearly, it's not as if we're going to have a windfall of monies, but the intention of bringing this to you all is the capital cost doesn't concern us in so much as we can create a plan, identify funding, leverage in kind. But I wanted this on y'all's mind on the forefront so that when we do start talking about budgets from an actual operational, the capital cost, you're going to see this one time. The long-term O and M, we do have to get two persons because right now, it is just us trying to do rights away and some others. So, Mr. Mayor, our plan is to identify the, some of the items to do in-house and with the monies. But I wanted to get it on the table that you're thinking in terms of when we ask for two positions in this department, it is because we have to go down that route.
Well, and I think everybody on the council knows that it's been a hunch, hunch mess over there for a long time. I mean, we've talked about, it's been unsustainable with the wood and it's been, I mean, we've got equipment over there that was not safe for the kids and a lot of different things have been real challenges over there. I think everybody here knows that.
I can't, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, I mean, I, I think we all know that's been a challenge and it's been, to maintain it has always been a challenge as well. So we know the, the challenges-
Reasons we got the new playground, traffic improvement-
Absolutely. And I think you were here-
We identified, you know, stuff that could be fixed by staff. And so we-
I can't answer, I can't answer your question on whether, whether Kimberly Horn has identified-
I didn't know why this was curious.
That was one of their charges. Now, whether, you know, in our retreat, when we, they discussed this information with us, there were two things that were on their next to-do list. One was the meeting that was held, and then I think there was further explorations, exploration. Again, I'm not sure what the actual commitment that was made there.
And I didn't, didn't know. I knew they were at that meeting and I was not. So I didn't know, but I, I had heard some discussion that there might be, so I wasn't sure. I know, you know, we even discussed that, you know, was the possibility, whether it is or not, like an example of the JYS A. I know there's lots of things been discussed, but I think he's right. Take it back to the committee, let the committee bring it back, and then, you know, we can go from there. from there.
Do you want to add the next city?
Go ahead.
Do you want to add the next?
No, 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 not.
Well, the good thing is, Mr. Mayor, transitioning to Perro, I think it's a good opportunity to transition because there is a difference in terms of, you know, you have parks and then you have passive parks. And that's kind of, to me, the Perro had always been identified in its vision as more of a passive park to where, and I don't want to oversimplify, but you get on the zero turn and you essentially are able to maintain it and some weed eating and some upkeep. So I was going to, Mr. Mayor, turn over to Kim to kind of let y'all know where we are, where we've been and where we currently are. President.
Go ahead, Ms. Goldner.
Great. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So I actually have some good updates tonight for a change regarding Perro Park, but I think before we get into that, for the benefit of council and for our community, it will be helpful to have a brief overview of the process and what it's taken to kind of get to this point so far. As Dr. Proctor had mentioned a little earlier, Perro Park has long been an initiative of council and our community leaders. And so many of you will recall that in late 2021, the Department of Community Affairs, Appalachian Regional Commission, or A R C, was invited to visit Jasper in Pickens County. As a part of us learning about the funding opportunities that they had, we in turn introduced them to the green space that we called Perro Park. There had not been an investment in our community up until this point through A R C's area development program and our project seemed like an ideal fit for funding. So in 2022, the city engaged the help of our Northwest Georgia Regional Commission to assist us with developing an RFP to go out and find an architectural farm that would then be able to help us get through the application process. And then once we were successful, help us through the design, construction, construction administration of the actual park. In late summer of 2022, a special committee that included the former mayor, Steve Lawrence, Dr. Proctor, Mr. Looney, myself and our former city manager, Sonya James, we interviewed the three highest scored firms that had responded to our RFP and we selected Goodwin Mills and Kaywood, or G M C, as our choice to help us and be our partner moving forward. We submitted a pre-application package and in March of 2023, A R C gave us the green light to proceed with a full application package. Working with G M C and our regional commission and many of our downtown businesses and partners, Phase One of the Perro Park project was approved by A R C in September of last year for the $1 million matching grant. Since that time, staff has primarily been working on the things that had to be done in order to get a release of funds. And that was, as I have mentioned to you before, we could not spend money and have it count towards our matching portion of that million dollars until we had all of this work done and we got our official release of funding from A R C. And so we did that state environmental review process work, which led us to doing the cultural resources survey out at the park space on behalf of the Eastern Cherokee Nation. After that, we sent a notice of no significant impact based on that environmental work and had that published in the paper along with our intent to request release of funding. And after that public review period was over, we then sent the official request to release funding to D C A and tonight I am delighted to share that we have received that. We are allowed to move forward from this point on. We can start spending money. G M C is on board. We have our kickoff meeting scheduled with their design team for next week sometime. I'll have to look at my calendar to see what day that is, but they're eager to get started and we are too. So in your package tonight, I know some of you were flipping through and looking, those are just as a refresher, the renderings that G M C had prepared that we included in with our full application package, just to kind of give you an idea again of what it is that we are looking for. Many of you heard me though, last month at council where I brought to you the GDOT's purchases of right-of-way and the additional easement space. That part is affected by that. And so that's definitely one of the first things we will have to give the final plans to G M C and make sure that they're aware, hey, we need to move some things, maybe shift them over a little. None of this is going to impact though what we want to do in that park.
Thank you, Mayor.
Happy to answer any questions. I'm sorry?
That letter came in this week.
It did, twice.
And part of, part of what y'all may recall that the way that I like to do some things is that the committees are fantastic for staff to kind of meet with you all, bounce some ideas off of, but there are certain elements in the city that we do that I would consider like a signature type project. So to me, this has been kind of a focal point of the community and the vision of you all's leaders even prior to my arrival in the 19. And so I wanted Kim to kind of give that history and to kind of let you all know that from the time that, you know, it's been approved, you've not really missed anything per se. And so what we hope to do is you'll see in the imagery to the point of from a long-term O and M, the one reason I was really excited about this project, you know, five years ago was identified it as a place of gathering, central to our community or downtown, a destination of place. And the idea that it's essentially some passive park space that can be up kept without some long-term implications of, you know, putting in features that have to be maintained. Grass is cut, weedy, some things replaced. So I don't foresee things being dramatically different than the original vision of that terrorist-style amphitheater-type gathering space for events. My experience with these type of projects is you look at the two-dimensional pieces of paper and you think, well, 2.4 million is way too much and I'm afraid that it's not going to be enough. We did a similar project in a community and it was about $4 million with no amphitheater. And that was around the 2015, 2016 era. It was probably, you know, 30% larger than this, but that's what I look at. So I don't, I don't foresee us not being able to do the majority, if not all. It just does want to make sure the excitement of getting started is before any sort of inflationary costs continue to rise. So.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I have just a few things.
Yes, sir.
So if you remember in October of 2022, 22, we talked about the future of the park, the future of our downtown events. And we mentioned things like budgeting for possible stages and other things that we could use in the short or long term for Perro Park. It's only recently that I've learned that those kind of plans never were explored from the staff level. And so, but I would like to reiterate that, as I've said before, the community development person will just, the future of our, maintenance of our parks will tie mostly, I guess, to people that do that, but there'll be a leader, another leader that will help facilitate the, how that park is managed and so forth and so on. So that, that's an important part of the puzzle, I think. So just like we've developed better departments in all of our leaders, that will be a department that we will develop in that way that will benefit the unification and utilization of our city. And you know that we've come a long way in how we manage things and I think the historical issues of city park, as we continue to move forward, will continue to get better at that as well. So that's all I'd like to add.
Thank you, sir. Council, at this time, we will move on to the Jifa project, which is next to the agenda. Give me just a moment as I transition over to that.
Okay. I'm happy to get started with that perk if you'd like, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so I just wanted to give you all an update because it's been a while since y'all had approved us to go and pursue those Jifa loans. As you'll recall, we had identified seven critically important projects through our partners with G M C on things that we needed to go ahead and tackle right away. We settled on four projects, two on wastewater, two on drinking water or potable water projects, and we secured about $8 million worth of funding. Four and a half for wastewater projects, three and a half for water. So all of those have been signed, they were returned to Jifa and while I was on vacation last week, we got the packages back. Everything has been fully executed and we are again, released to start projects. And so we have a meeting with G M C next week to start discussing how to get that master lift station project going because that is a critical need and probably the longest project in terms of design, construction, things like that, that will take, that we're looking at 18 to 24 months, depending on the procurement of some of those electrical components and things like that. I am encouraged though because Andrew has met with some other communities and there is a design of lift station that may work well in this situation, that could take some of that lead time and reduce it. It could reduce some of the electrical components and concerns that we would have had, similar to what we're having at the, the actual plant expansion project, and may actually be a little bit less in cost as well. And so that's probably our hot topic that we'll be meeting with G M C on next week. But we will also be talking about the other two really important projects, which are the collection system rehab and that's addressing I N I and other issues within that basin that feeds our town creek and mineral springs lift stations. And then also our distribution system remediation or upgrades. And so that's fixing areas where we have undersized main, where we do not have back feeds, where we need loops, where we need just a myriad of things in order to better serve our customers. So we should have some pretty exciting updates next week on how we will be getting started with that after we meet with G M C on Tuesday. On the water plant project, which is the other drinking water project that was funded, Kim Linkhorn is our partner for that project. We have met with them once and kind of started looking at, okay, we've all identified that we want to do all of these things and we need to do these things. And so they've provided us a list and have asked for us to give it some thought, prioritize the things that we really feel like we need to accomplish. And we will be meeting with them in the next week or two to start developing the plans for that project as well. So we have lots of moving pieces, lots of projects going on right now in terms of utilities, parks, roads, everything.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, any questions on Jifa? All right, this time, next item will be adjourned to his executive session before I get there. Ms. Goldner, we need a recess.
No, I can bring the executive session.
Okay. Council, if there's any questions, we go to executive session for legal. Have a motion, have a second. Motion taken, any discussion? All in favor? Vote a second. Thank you, Council.
Yield the floor for a motion.
Make a motion to come out of executive session.
Second.
Have a motion, second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Vote a second. Thank you, Council. Council, this time, yield the floor for a motion.
Make a motion to rescind our prior, our prior motion to approve the environmental agreement for use and distribution of proceeds from the T-Splash and to authorize the mayor to execute any and all necessary documents.
Have a motion, Council, or have a second.
Second.
Motion taken, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Vote a second. Thank you, Council. Council, yield the floor for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I believe, if I may, I believe the motion for rescension would then necessitate perhaps a substitute motion in order?
Yes, sir. Yield the floor for a motion.
Make a motion for authorize the mayor to execute negotiations and necessary documents concerning potential T-Splash.
Have a motion, Council, for a second.
Second.
Motion taken, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Vote a second. Thank you, Council. Council, this time, intercede a motion to adjourn.
So.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Vote a second. Thank you, Council. May I adjourn? Council, yield the floor for a motion to rescind the adjournment.
So.
Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Vote a second. Thank you, Council. This time, yield the floor for a motion.
Make a motion to authorize the mayor to negotiate potential T-Splash with the county.
Does that motion also include the approval of a referendum and the IGA is present for the five-year term? Council, have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Soffe, any discussions?
I think that hopefully will cover.
Council, all in favor?
Aye.
Vote a second. Thank you. Council, yield the floor for a motion for adjourn.
A motion, we adjourn. Second.
Motion taken, second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Vote a second. Thank you, Council.